All right, I took call order of the January sixteen, two thousand twenty-four Personnel and Appointments Committee. We are calling to order at five thirty. Do a roll call. Council Gieske?
Present.
Council Russ?
Here.
And I'm Bruce Jones here. All present. Uh, we have calendar and communications, any communications?
It's our first meeting, so.
None, none. Joe, can you do an approval or motion for the approval of the minutes of October seventeenth?
I move we approve the minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, Gieske.
Any questions or comments? Moments, no. Uh, though all those who are approved, approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nate? Absent. Abstaining, nothing, when it's minutes passed? Three, zero, zero. So we have a number of uh reappointments and um new appointments, we have people in the audience, we will be interviewing you, we'll go through the reappointments first and then do the the interviews for the appointments. Dan, do you want to just read off, we have the first agency is inland inland wetlands agency?
Yes, um.
Read those.
I moved to reappoint Barbara Block, Eunice Supfen and Barbara Williams um to a new term on the inland wetlands commission.
Second.
Do we have any questions on any of these appointments?
Are any of these people in the audience?
No. We'll move all as a block.
Yeah, um, can I speak on the motion? Uh, yeah, um, I read the chair's comments on all of them and he said they were all excellent board members, so I am in favor of supporting their reappointments.
Okay. Fantastic. Right. Council Russ, can you do the library board?
We have to vote on that.
We have to vote on.
Are we going to vote all at once?
Yeah.
Vote them as separate. We could vote this way.
Yeah, we'll vote separately.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Nothing, all those abstaining, nothing? Uh, motion passes three, zero, zero. Just asking. Moved. Second. Council Russ?
I'm.
Library Board?
I make a motion to reappoint Hallie Keeler, nah, I'm sorry, Shawnee, or Shaw- Shawshin, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna mess up your last name. Ned and Nasaiva, Matthew Schulman and Carl Strand to the library board.
I second. Do we have any comments or questions?
All have.
All have yeses.
All have yeses, all have similar comments like providing a unique outlook, putting in extra work, um, stuff like that, I have no concerns, no- nothing was brought to my attention, so.
Council Russ, the same?
The same. Excellent reviews.
All right, um, all those in favor of moving the library board uh reappointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions, nothing, this passes three, zero, zero. On the uh reappointment for the shellfish commission. Council Gieske, can you do Joseph Kane?
Uh, I move to reappoint Joseph Kane to the selfish commission.
Second.
Any questions? Comments?
No. No.
Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes three, zero, zero.
I make a motion to reappoint John Burt to the retirement board.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
You have no seconds.
Thank you for volunteering.
Stretch it out a little bit. Second. We have Mr. Burt in uh presence, any questions for Mr. Burt?
No.
No, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes three, zero, zero. So now, let's make sure. Done. Library. Mr. Kane. Burt. All right, so what I would like to do. The chairperson of the Shellfish Commission has asked that Thomas McLaughlin, who is a current alternate member, uh, be moved up to the permanent seat as a regular member.
Find it in my. It's my last one.
It's the last one.
Page twenty-eight. Would you like me to make a motion?
Yep.
So I can answer the question. Um, I will make a motion to I'm sorry, um, move um Mr. McLaughlin from his alternate member position to a regular member position on the Shellfish Commission.
Second.
This is being done, actually Chair Chair Roger Sherman requested that instead of reappointing Mr. McLaughlin to the alternate, he be appointed as a full member, vacant seat. Do we have any questions?
Is he in the audience? Is he in the audience?
Is he, is Mr. McLaughlin in the audience?
No. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Passes three, zero, zero. He's removed. Believe that covers all the reappointments.
And. Yeah, yeah.
Don't see any others.
Now it's all there.
Okay. But now we will move to new, new applicants. And why don't we start? Is John Levinson in the is in the audience? John?
No.
No? He's applying for Community Development Advisory Committee.
I don't know. Oh, so I can speak to him.
He's a qualified.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah.
Hello for caller ending in five eight four one, are you here participating at all in the personnel committee or just uh watching? Are you an applicant? Very. Uh, that's what they have permission.
Five eight four one is Mr. Levinson's phone number.
Oh, oh.
It's.
Okay.
John Levinson's phone number.
Mr. Levinson, if you can unmute, um, we would like to to uh interview you. Are you able to unmute, Mr. Levinson?
We want to move on and see if.
We can come back.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Levinson, if you can hear us and you have or having trouble unmuting, just unmute and uh notify us when you unmuted and then we'll come back to you.
Let's move on to um Rathgen, is that pronounced correctly? If you would like to come up to the theater? That would be great.
Do you have any sort of making motion?
Good, make a motion.
I make a motion to appoint or to recommend theater Rathgen as an alternate for self-fish commission. As an alternate on the self-fish commission.
Second.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, John, this is Bruce John, we will come back to you in a moment.
Okay. All right, no problem.
Thanks for being here, we'll come right, come back to you in just a couple of minutes.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. I know you're, it's been a little while, so.
Yeah, not to worry.
Okay, all right. So, uh, just sort of set the top stage and then um the council can ask you some, some questions, so um we know you've applied for a while, your application has been in, we also have two other applicants that have come in for alternate positions that we will get to in March, because they're in the, in the window, the time waiting window. So um, we'll do the, your interview tonight and then take notes and um get there in two months, if that's okay with you. Pardon? And then we'll get, we'll get their interviews done in two months and then make a decision at that.
Okay.
Point, so um, I also have here, and I just wanted to I had an email from you. Uh, you're the current uh sh- a shellfish warden.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to read this just to, so that um you know, so I'm, I'm following up, this is an email that I believe I think you sent, I'm following up to see what further steps and needs to become commissioner of the grad self, shellfish, I scheduled to meet the committee last month, but meeting was canceled. Currently on the shelf, the senior shellfish warden, um interim chair Roger Sherman was told I need to formally resign in order to begin the search for my replacement, which I hesitated to do until I'm officially appointed the commissioner. If not appointed, my intentions to remain the senior ward.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to make, get, so we're all the same, the same page, so um. Council Russ?
Can you um talk to me about why you'd like to be on this commission?
Sure. I've been a warden, I think, I think it's been four years, perhaps even five. And the wardens is probably the face of the commission. It primarily does everything that the commission needs to be done by their bylaws. I moved up after two years and um, at the loss of our senior warden, he passed away. And um, I took over senior warden. Essentially, we do, as the face, we make sure that all, all the rules and regs are followed. It's a very active shellfish community, we'll have fifty to sixty shell fishermen on Saturday. Um, since I was there, they didn't implement using the boats, they, the, the senior warden was a very senior man. And I didn't, I understood he was ninety-one years old. And he didn't want to enter the boat any longer, and so we brought that back into play. And ever since that, we've noticed we've got a very, very large population of shell fishermen. Uh, during that time, we also realized that a lot of our rules and regulations need to be addressed and updated. We're really concerned about the um the amount of clams that are being harvested and the sustainability of maintaining the beds. And to buy uh replenishment and seed is very expensive and hard to do, it's restricted, we're not allowed to buy outside of the state unless it's authorized and we go to Massachusetts. So, you know, on a given Saturday, we could uh see fifty-five thousand clams leave the water and go into people's bellies. And uh, that's pretty hard to replenish, and that's just one day. So, as a warden, we've started to realize that we need to make the changes. And in all due respect to all the people on the commission, there, they didn't grow through the ranks, so they didn't quite understand what we are speaking about and quite honestly, you know, they were more involved with the commercial folks and leases and all that, completely understand it. So from my perspective, I thought it was very important that the uh, the wardens really, really hone in on the rules and regulations. Like for instance, there are people that come in and use commercial means to shellfish, it was never intended to do that, so they can overharvest in twenty minutes. Where someone with a raid could be out there for two hours and get their quota. Some things like that, fact that we carry um paper um permits. People in the water. So they don't bring their permits, but the permit says you need to have your permit on you at all times. So, we then have to stop them, and what do we do, make them put their waiters on and walk two miles to the parking lot to get their passes? So that was one of the reasons why I wanted to really get involved, it's important. We've got two, besides myself, two incredibly good wardens and uh, we want to make it a better place, uh, and a better experience. That's number one, number two, you know, we've had a, a, a pretty good stocking program, but in the last two years, we've got a great stocking program. We've really figured it out how to get it, Jay Kane, you just brought on, Joseph Kane, sourced it out when we place it and we monitor it. Um, I think that's important. I don't know if, in full disclosure on this, I know like water company superintendent. So I have a relationship with the water. And uh, with that relationship, when we were having some very bad issues in the, in the Mystic River, uh, back in August and September, and just recently as well, I had the unique ability to, to talk with people in public works and work with them and work with a water and sewer company. And uh, I just felt that was a conduit that we need in the um, in the shellfish commission, because really, without water quality, we don't have a shellfish commission. And that's really important. So I thought that experience would help along with that. And then finally doing the water samples, it's very complicated, it's twenty-one stations that we monitor. And that goes from uh, uh, the aquatic river. It goes into the outskirts of the aquatic, it goes in the Muffer Cove, it goes into the Mystic River, it goes over to um, uh, the Esquire Beach. And we monitor, we GPS coordinate, I was out in six foot waves back in December. We get that water sample in, because if it fails, the beds close. And then the, the last and final thing is we have a great relationship with uh, the Department of Agriculture and aquaculture. And um, without that, th- they're tough. And they don't, they don't mess around, if we fail, we fail. And you know, they, they really try to make us become better at our job. And since I've been doing that for such a long time, I have that great relationship. And that's why I wanted to do it, a- it's not, I need the money to be a warden, I enjoyed being in the water, I've been a shell fisherman since I could walk. And uh, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Can you um the thing you would, if you took this, you would resign from as being a warden, right? Correct, I can't do both. You can't do both. And, and, and I was told if I, you know, before I could get on the commission, that I would have to resign, and um, they don't want me to resign as a senior warden, they would like me on the commission, but they don't want me to resign until, because let's face it, it takes three months to bring somebody on.
Right.
And we're coming into the se- the slow season, we were hoping I could get on in February, so we could have somebody trained and up and running by April, because that's when it gets really busy again. Do we have people sort of in line for warden positions or? No, they won't want to start looking until I resign.
Yeah, that is my, my question was, is like, I, I think you've made, I think you're a great warden, so I wouldn't want to lose you as warden to put you on the selfish commission, but just the way that the process is, you can't.
Yeah, I love being a warden, the people we've met, it's a, it's a, you, you meet the neatest people. You know, when you see three generations of great grandfather, grandfather and father, actually four, and grandsons out shellfishing on a Sunday, you know, helping old pops in and out of the water, it's pretty good to see. We got a, we have a great shellfish program. So. Can, can you just tell us what the shellfish commission does? Oh, gosh. It just goes like, it goes, it, it's a whole broad spectrum, for one, the, the, the side that I primarily take care of is the face of it. But we have commercial beds, we have a lot of commercial beds. And we have a lot of people, watermen that are making their money day in and day out. Uh, this year was a very, very testing year because of water quality issues and all the rain. Um, but we have leases that are monitored, that are lease from Town of Grouton and, and Stonington. Um, and we have men that, and ladies that go out and grow oysters on those beds and have to follow big procedures and they have to follow rules and regulations. I give you an example, three weeks ago, we got a notification that we had three inches of rain, all shellfish beds are closed. That afternoon, I see a boat out harvesting on their beds and see him drive by with a delivery. And um, I was able to go to the restaurant and say,
Can't use this.
You can't use them, they're closed. And um, that's what a warden would do. And so we have that uh, to do, there's, and, and it's also dealing with the commercial guys, they have a problem, we're there to help them. Um, it's, it's very complex, you're dealing with men's livelihoods and, and uh, you know, we try to make it so they can continue doing that. So the Shellfish Commission sets the rules and regulations and the warden goes out and it does the enforcement. Yes. Checks things up and. Yes. Person in the street. Yes. Well, by the way, we grow the greatest oysters, the sweet, salty, and even our clam, so we should be very proud. Okay. You have any additional questions?
No.
All right. So John, I'm gonna finish the questions, should he just um because we got two more people to interview that'll come in March. What? Just hold on, then, okay, so that's the next, that's the step. So what would be the next step? So the next step is we have the two other interviews to go through, so once those two interviews are done, then we can make a decision. Okay. So it's three slots, three people for two uh vacancies. Very good. So. Well, thank you. Fantastic, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for the meeting.
You're welcome. All right, um let's go to John Levinson, John, you, you were there?
I'm here, can you still hear me?
Yes, I can, yep.
Okay, I'm here.
Bruce, you need a motion. You need, so Jones, you need a motion, or Chair Jones?
I need to, I'm just looking for my.
Age twenty-three, if that is helpful to.
Okay, um Mr. Gieske, would you make a motion?
I move to appoint uh Donald Levinson to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
Mr. Levinson, thank you for being here, open to some, a couple, several questions for you. Council Gieske, we're gonna open the questions to Don?
Uh, yes, thanks, Mr. Levinson, Mr. Levinson, um, could you tell me a little bit about the Community Development Advisory Committee and why you have interest in serving?
Yeah, um, basically by federal regulations, uh, each town that applies for Community Development Block Grants have to have a citizen-based advisory committee to advise the staff on, you know, the various activities and applications. As far as why I'm interested, I was on the Historic District Commission for, I know somewhere between eight and ten years, I resigned about six months ago. But I'd still like to be uh active in town affairs, I was a attorney for the state of Connecticut for over thirty years, so I'm very familiar with the state government. And it's really the state government that sets a lot of priorities and requirements and qualifications for the Community Development Block Grants, so I think um, you know, particularly well situated and qualified to assist in those issues.
Um, what branch were you a state attorney for, like what part of the state of Connecticut government were you an attorney for?
Uh, it's, I was actually for three different, I started out on the commission on human rights and opportunities. I then, I was a litigator for discrimination cases, and I was an administrative law judge for what was then DEP, that's now DEEP. And finally, I ended up, uh, I guess the last eight years, I was an administrative law judge for the Department of Public Health.
All right. Council Russ?
I don't have any questions.
We know how long this term is. I see no more questions, um those are improved of the, uh, moving of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, none, all right, uh, the motion passes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Levinson, and you have passed. First turn. The first hurdle.
All right, well, thank you very much.
To the council, so.
All right, thank you very much.
I think we're all set, thank you.
Okay, I just have to figure out how to unmute myself and get off with this stuff, I'll figure it out. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Don.
Bye.
Kirsten?
Uh, you.
All right. Council Russ, can you make a motion?
I make a motion to um recommend Kirsten Paca, Paca? Paca. Paca, thank you, um, to be appointed to the Historic District Commission as a regular member.
Second, Gieske.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Russ?
Sure. Can you tell me um, what makes you interested in Historic District Commission and um, what you know about it? I am interested um, in being part of the committee because I am a fairly new homeowner to Mystic. Although I grew up on the other side of the state and I feel like I've spent my life coming to Mystic, I'm a new homeowner here about eight years. Um, when I purchased the home, I, although the real estate agent just said, you're part of the historic district, I really didn't know what that meant, because the town I grew up in, in Fairfield County, it meant something different. And I take responsibility for not fully researching that as a new homeowner. But um, I found out the rules by making mistakes and not really having a full understanding of what the expectations were. So I felt like I purchased a home in the historic district, not really knowing what the rules are, and I am a rule follower, so when I break the rules, I don't. I am a rule follower. So when I break the rules, I don't like that. But it's also kind of like buying a condo and suddenly realizing that you have a homeowners association that you didn't know about. So I, I, I have been feeling in the past eight years that I've owned the home and I have been a Mystic resident for the past two and a half years now. I, I feel like I'm expected to know the rules by osmosis. I'm just supposed to know what the rules are. Now, now I understand where to find the rules and that the bylaws or guidelines that are online from nineteen ninety-four are the ones that we're supposed to follow. I think that I can make a change for new and interested homeowners in understanding what they're buying into. How I'm going to do that, I'm not exactly sure, but I do really feel that there is an opportunity to make a change for those homeowners. I found out that I needed to go before the Historic District to change the windows because I just happened to mention something to a neighbor. And she's like, you know, you have to apply for that, right? I had no idea. So I want, because of my experience, I want other people to have a different experience. So I'm hoping to make a change that way. And that's why I'm interested. So what I know about the historic district is that it is a group of interested individuals who want to maintain a historic standard of the area in which they live. And rightfully so. Mystic is a really cool place and you don't want to make changes to that history significantly. That nautical architecture is really incredible and you want to keep that. This is a gem. So you don't want to make those changes. And so I understand why there is a committee. I just think that there's different ways that we can go about helping homeowners understand what they need to do. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for your involvement, your backstory. I find it really interesting, um, how you've discovered the commission. Um, what is, um, your feeling on, uh, I preservation and preserving the historic district and supporting, um, the current standing? As you said, like sometimes, you know, some people want to do a big addition, but it's not up to code with the historic district. How do you feel about stuff like that before coming before the commission?
I feel that the houses that are currently in the historic district do need to be maintained to a certain level. I understand that that's kind of the expectation. Um, I think that there are some areas though, where there could possibly be some leeway. And I'll just give you an example, windows. So does it matter? The exact material? Does it have to be like for like all the time? When over time, it could be more, um, efficient to choose something else. So I think there are some gray areas in there. But in general, I do think that the historic feeling should be preserved.
Thank you. Have you been watching some of the HDC meetings on YouTube? Just to get
Um, I have watched some over the summer. This fall, some things have occurred that I just haven't had the time.
But you've been, you're, you are familiar with how they sort of operate and how.
Yes, I have been to several, more than several historic district meetings in person. Yes.
Do you, um, are you familiar? I know they had some sort of controversial decisions earlier this year, went on a fence, a highest fence and also, uh, gravel street. There was a house on gravel street that needed to be, people want to change. The historic district, are you familiar with some of those?
Um, I actually was in person to, for that summer, for those fence decisions. And then I was, because of something that was occurring at my house. And then I was also at, I happened to be at another meeting when there was a third follow-up about the fence. So yes, I am aware. And then I also did watch a follow-up of the HDC meeting. After that, I just watched it after the homeowner came to make a statement.
That's great. Thank you for doing that. Can you tell what you think about lawyers? I'm gonna just be blunt.
Well, I am a social worker.
Recommendations.
I'm sorry, I didn't have to hear the last.
Lawyer's recommendations to.
Well, I am a social worker. I'm a master's level social worker and sometimes we play nice in the sandbox and sometimes we do not. Um, but my feeling is that lawyers are people too. So I don't have anything personally against lawyers. I will say that I am just about to start a job for an elder law attorney. So I think.
I guess the question is really, is your level of comfort with regulations and how, because often sometimes, uh, HDC end up in, you know, some kind of a, a legal issue or a ruling on something.
Thank you.
Regulations.
Thank you for clarifying. So as a social worker, I have worked over thirty years in skilled nursing and in hospital systems. And I can't think of a more regulated industry than nursing homes. And I have managed to negotiate groups of people through federal, state and local guidelines while serving, while giving care to seniors. So I understand that regulations exist. I can't always agree with them, but, but you have to follow the rules at times.
But you're familiar with working with them and you've been doing it for your whole career. That's, that's great. Okay. Thank you. That's excellent. Do you know any of the members of the, of the current commission?
Um, I do. Um, I have a neighbor who is part of the historic district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, you are. Okay. Excellent. I, I only asked just because I, you know, we're new to this. So there's a lot of people we don't know.
Absolutely.
It's like trying to put some, to some names. That's great. So any additional questions?
No.
Counselor Gaskin? Nope. Right. Take a vote. All of those in favor of Kristen Paca, correct?
Kirsten.
Kirsten Paca, um, for a full-time position on the his, uh, Historic District Commission.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next hurdle.
So what will happen next is this will move forward to the, to the council. It's a two-step process. So if you're here, it's a recommendation, then we'll, we'll move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out on a, on a snow evening. Other business? Is there any other business? No? I have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned at six.
Oh, nine.
Oh, nine.